Not late.
In the tax rate hearing. City clerk?
Sure. Based on the 2024 assessed valuations from Monroe, Rawls, and Marion Counties, our estimated general tax revenue is approximately four percent higher than 2023. Based on the 2024 assessed valuations from Monroe County, our assessed library tax revenue is approximately nine percent higher than 2023. Last year for the library is fifty-six thousand eight hundred and eleven dollars. This year it's approximately sixty-two thousand six hundred and eighty-four dollars and eighty-one cents. And then for general last year was two forty, two hundred and forty-six thousand seven hundred and ten dollars. This year is two hundred and fifty-six thousand two dollars and seventy-four cents. The proposed general tax rate for 2024 is point seven five three seven per hundred dollars of assessed valuation. This is the same rate as last year. The proposed library tax rate for 2024 is point two oh 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 per one hundred dollars assessed valuation, and it is also the same as last year. Are there any questions or comments?
So there is no increase?
No increase.
Very well. Does the public have any questions? Closed. Okay, if you will, please call the order. Let's recite the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend?
Father, tonight we thank you for allowing us together here again. Tonight we ask your blessings on the mayor and the councilman and all those that serve our community. We ask that you be with them and keep them safe in your protection as they lead and guide our community into the future, into what it could be, that it could be a model of what it can be to other communities around ours. So we give you thanks and give you praise for that, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Amen. Please be seated. Let's talk the roll call. Greg Smith?
Here.
Lori Quinn?
Here.
Mike Snyder?
Here.
Adrian Saunders?
Here.
Robin Simpson?
Here.
Jason Osborne is absent. He needed a notification. We have a quorum. First thing on the agenda will be review and approval of the minutes of the August eighth, twenty twenty-four meeting located Tab four.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of August eighth, twenty twenty-four as prepared.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the minutes of the August eighth, twenty twenty-four Board of Alderman Meeting. Do we have a second? We have a motion, a second on the floor, to approve the meeting minutes of the August eighth, twenty twenty-four meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All please, all opposed, please say no. Motion carries. On the mayor's report. Regarding Clarence Cannon Wholesale Water Commission, again, the only thing I have to report on that is we will be required, the board will be required to make a decision prior to September thirtieth to be communicated to Clarence Cannon Wholesale Water Commission's Board of our intended actions. Next is a brief discussion on Black and Veet, which was our engineer of record for the city of Monroe City for Study One and Study Two of the water treatment facility. They prepared a very detailed analysis along with recommendations on how this board might proceed in the future. The discussions with the members. It was Ben Freezen, who was the second gentleman, George, Mark?
Hill.
Hill. We had a very lengthy discussion. What they will be doing is providing a quotation to this board for review and discussion. It will be, part one will be to resubmit the permit for application for chlorine dioxide. And George, if I say, if I misstate anything, please feel free to correct me because this is important. And number two is the permanginate feed. Number three will be also a quote for a bid pack for the, I may have this wrong, valves. Well, the bid pack will be for the pumps for the containment. Is that correct?
Yeah, pumps and containment for the cannibals, yes.
Is that also the valves for the retention basin?
No, that's totally different.
Separate, okay. Well, in addition to that would be the valves for the retention, retention basin. Those are all things that we need to know relative to your question, wanting some specifics that will allow us to make some determination, allow us, board, to make a determination relative to the action, it choose to take and decisions it needs to make.
Mr. Mayor, there was also a coramens in there. You didn't mention that.
That's, and I did not, because I did not write it down.
Okay.
So thank you for bringing that to our attention. It's, would it be fair, would it be a fair assessment to say that what they're going to provide to us is the initial engineering cost quote for some of the equipment, but the engineering that will be required to take the steps necessary to provide, if I overstep, say so, to provide a redundant, robust system that will provide quality water?
Yes.
And meet all the requirements for the D and R going forward. I'd like to say it's going to fix everything, but I think that would be an overshoot. Now, one thing I want to briefly discuss is something that we do not know, and we have not discussed. Along, two more things for the board to consider. We will have a lot to consider when we get this quote in. It seems to make a lot of sense to engage them or continue to engage them so we're not paying someone else to do what has already been completed. I think that kind of makes sense from a, from a financial perspective. In addition, what we haven't discussed is a requirement that if we chose to go with Clarence Cannon, and I'll abbreviate Clarence Cannon, they could even for me to say, the one thing we haven't discussed is, yes, we will continue to have to provide fluoridation of the water, so we'll have to have a fluoridation facility here in town to do that. It can be done. We haven't discussed any of that. And also, we would also have to be prepared to discuss the decommissioning costs, decommission to water plant. So we will provide more information to this board as soon as available and as quickly as possible upon receipt and review of the Black and Veet, Black and Veet quotation. Any questions for the board?
Is there timeframe of which they're supposed to?
We thought we would have today.
Okay.
But we did not.
Okay.
So they're moving just as fast as they possibly can, and I want to take every opportunity to get it to the hands of the board. As a matter of fact, as soon as we get it, it will go out to the board as a whole. You will all receive it via the email. Fair enough? All right. So that completes the mayor's report on those items. I would like to ask the board for permission. I need a motion to move the city property for sale bid opening from the bottom of the agenda to now. I would entertain a motion to do so.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion to move the city property for sale bid opening to the next item within the mayor's report. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion, a second on the floor. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. As you are aware, we sought bids for the sale of what's otherwise known as Gordon Hill Park. It's actually comprised of two individual lots. I'll call it on the end of Lawn Street and what's the other street? Cameline Road?
Yeah.
Is that correct? It would be on the north side of the property. I don't have an official letter opener, so I'm going to have to use my handy dandy old timer. I'm sure there's some more, I wasn't aware of doing this, so I don't know what it is, so bear with me.
Do you receive two bids?
Two, yeah, yes, thank you. We received a total of two bids, of which we are now opening. And the first sealed bid is from Corey Hortsmeyer, who bid ten thousand one hundred dollars, which is way below the reserve. The second bid is from Lori Lindbauer Buckman, an amount of nineteen thousand and eleven dollars.
What was our reserve?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five, so that one exceeds the reserve.
So I would need a motion from the board to accept the bid of nineteen thousand and eleven dollars for property lots forty-three and forty-four in the Heavenly Acres subdivision in Monroe City, Missouri, otherwise known as the Gordon Hill Park.
I'll make a motion to accept the bid from submitted by Lori Buckman for nineteen thousand and eleven dollars.
We have a motion on the floor to accept the bid from Lori Lindbauer Buckman in the amount of nineteen thousand and eleven dollars for lots forty-three and forty-four in Heavenly Acres. Do we have a seven, second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion, a second on the floor to accept the bid for the property lots forty-three and forty-four in Heavenly Acres subdivision in Monroe County in Missouri, Monroe City, Missouri, Monroe, West Wallace County, isn't it? Doesn't matter. Probably known as Gordon Hill Park. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Bids awarded to Lori Lindbauer Buckman. That concludes the mayor's report. Moving on, next item on the agenda will be the city clerk's report. Please proceed.
I didn't receive a message from Mike asking for copies of the next statements and the written question, and those are all at the back of your files. As noted on the report, our general plan has a balance of one million five hundred and sixty-five thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars and eighty-three cents. And the sweep account has a balance of five hundred and sixty-six thousand four hundred and sixty-six dollars, and this was as of August nineteenth. We had a meeting regarding the bright speed fiber installation. They're going to be coming to town and they'll be doing some overhead and underground borrowing on that. We don't have an anticipated start date yet. There's anything else to report at this time?
Is that, are they doubling up what Sharon Valley is doing or?
They'll have their own service.
Is it going to be in the same area? So they'll actually have two competing fiber services then?
Yes.
Wow. Cool.
And there are some double poles in some area that they'll be removing before?
That's correct, that's correct. Those of us who've been around may, may remember, excuse me, CentriTel was the phone provider that, I'm not sure who they took over from, there's been some name changes, but there's a lot of double pole, double poles where we were unable to get CentriTel to move their lines when we replaced poles. So there's a lot of locations where there's two poles sitting side by side. And so they, they assured us that they would take care of that, so that's a help to us. They're going to, where there are currently, I use the phrase loosely, telephone lines, they will be attaching their cable to that line. It'll be like strung underneath of it, attached to it. We may have some discussion with them about attempting to maybe talk them into doing something to reduce the total weight on our, on our poles. It becomes important in case of high winds or storms. They may not be able to, and they may not request to do so, but we're, I think we're going to answer the question.
Alex, I've asked him to kind of look into getting a city official Facebook page. It would just be an informational purpose only page, no comments would be heard or anything of that nature. We ran into a few snags with it, so I don't know how well it's, if it's going to work out or not, but he's still checking into it, so I'll have to report it the next meeting on that.
I think that's good. I mean, so many places use, I mean, social internet and use Facebook accounts as an official. I guess we should have our own official Facebook page, I guess, for the city.
The, one of the requirements says you have to link it, link that Facebook page to another Facebook account.
Personal.
Personal Facebook account, yes. And so that's kind of the?
Issue, okay. Yeah, because, yeah, that doesn't make sense to me.
You have to link it to a personal?
Yeah.
Yeah. You need to make it off of a personal account.
So we're still looking into it. Jennifer Walkup in the license office will be attending the License Office Bureau Conference in Jefferson City September ninth and tenth. She hasn't given anything to us yet about the reservation that she'll need, but the conference itself is free. She would just need accommodations for one evening while she's at the conference. So I would just need a motion to approve that expense. Unfortunately, I don't have an amount. They haven't released a block of room yet, if that's what you said.
What is the? What's the max rate at that hotel?
What's?
What's the night, max rate at that hotel?
I can imagine there being more than two hundred dollars.
Is there a standard rate, like that the state would pay for Jennifer?
You want to do a motion up to X amount? Yeah, that way it's covered. Make a motion to approve hotel for Jennifer Walkup at the annual LOB conference up to two hundred and fifty dollars.
Could you please assist me by telling me what's that conference called again?
LOB, License Office.
L O what?
License Office Bureau, LOB.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the hotel expenses up to two hundred and fifty dollars for Jennifer Walkup to attend the LOB conference. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion, a second, a third. To approve paying up to two hundred and fifty dollars for hotels for Jennifer Walkup to attend the LOB conference. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
I had a meeting with the shelter workshop yesterday, I believe it was, and they just aren't getting enough business to operate and do their recyclables every week. They're going to have to go to a once a month pickup at this point in time, and it will be on the first Tuesday of each month, and that will go into effect this September. So I think they're going to be coming to the meeting next month and, you know, have a little more information for us, but is that something we can get on our webpage, on our webpage? Anything to give the word out to the customers for that?
Mike, are you willing to take on that responsibility?
Yeah, I'll get with Connie and see if she made a flyer or she just made something up to that. Okay. Yeah, I'll get that one there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alvin Snyder.
The last one here, you received some proposed holiday revisions for the city of Monroe City. We, what we currently, the line has been in place for several years. I've contacted, you know, I've looked for the state of Missouri, and I've got repair repairs in hand along here as well to compare with. I don't know where our budget stays as far as this year and what it will, what it will look like for employee raises. And so I wanted to bring this to you all to consider. And we, at this time, we do have two positions open. We have one position open in our gas department, and we do have an electric employee that submitted his resignation, and his last day will be on the twenty-seventh. So it would be more lucrative to potential applicants to see, you know, more holidays observed. And I just didn't know if you all would consider updating the one for Monroe City.
I think what you proposed is very consistent, really, with
I do too.
most states. It's not really adding, that's not adding any expense to the budget. I mean, we were either going to pay them for hourly work. The day, yeah. Kind of a nice thing to do. I, unless we want to discuss it more.
Adrian?
I'm good with that.
Greg?
Yeah, it keeps us in line with the rest of the community, so.
I would entertain a motion to accept the proposed Monroe City holidays as outlined on this report from the city clerk's office.
John, will we need ordinance for this, or can it be done by motion?
Yeah, can be done by motion.
I'll make, I'll make the motion to accept.
If we do need an ordinance, I'll just do it for the next meeting.
Okay.
Excellent.
I'll make a motion to accept the proposed holidays for the city employees as presented.
Have a motion on the floor to accept the proposed Monroe City holidays for our employees. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the proposed Monroe City holidays from the city clerk's office. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All placed, opposed, please say no. Motion carries.
I don't know if it's your question or not, but email address, I mean, I know we hit some snags with getting the dot org or the dot, is that my?
The dot gov has been approved. I apologize.
Oh, that's okay.
I should have said something. The monrocitymo.gov has been approved. And Tiger Hawk, which is our, I will refer to him as our IT group, will be here, I believe, next week working on that. Is that correct, Alex?
Yes, sir.
And we will start getting the email addresses changed over. I do not know if Alex is prepared to tell you how that's going to be formatted, because we have chosen not to use names unless the board wants to change that, because we ran into just a little bit of a difficulty and expense at the conclusion of the last election and the seating of the newly elected officials to get the email activated for those people. In the case of the mayor's office is now and will be mayor, the future will be mayor at monrocitymo.gov. And that way, when we have changes in administration, changes in elected officials, and I'm not sure what the city clerk is going to do or other individuals are going to do, how they choose to have theirs done, their situation's a little bit different. We hope they don't, we hope we're not changing the city clerks and stuff every two or three years.
City clerks will be city clerk at monrocitymo.com.
And that's fine. And so we're trying to make it just very easy for whoever is, is elected in the future. The person leading will just give them their password and login information, or they can create a new one, or however you all might want to do that. Be a lot simpler than what we had to do, I assure you. A whole lot simpler. Working with the state, working with the federal government gets a little tricky when you're using names.
So did we come up with a naming convention for us, or?
Sir?
Did you come up with a naming convention for us?
Yeah, so it'll be Alderman, Ward one, dash one, Alderman, Ward one, dash two, and so on and so forth.
Okay.
We'll, we'll, we'll get you guys.
We can still.
Before we hit us, keep that, that's not, yeah. No.
Right.
Obviously, you certainly have the ability to provide your input, wherever you all decide what we'll do. But that's just something, something me thinking about.
Are the holidays listed in the benefits manual? The employee handbook?
They're in the employee handbook, yes.
So we need to update that too.
We'll have to update that. We're also looking for admin committee to, to get together and actually review the entire policy manual to make it more consistent with the state and federal requirements relative to the drug, drug-free workplace. So those may be, maybe those are all things that we can do at the same time. If not, we can go ahead and make that change immediately. Is employee handbook on website?
No.
Should it be on the website? Is there a restriction to have it on the website? Okay, that's something we'll discuss. That concludes your report, city clerk?
Yes, it does.
Next on the agenda is the city attorney's report.
Nothing for me out in session.
Okay. Next on the agenda is authorized guest speakers with Mr. Brad Foner. Please step up. You're welcome from up here, sir, if you'd like to. You're more than welcome from here. Oh, come on, I can't agree with you.
I'm here to talk about the city utility policy. I haven't had a chance to, to read the nearest one that has been, uh, to me, but the one that I received last, last meeting, I went through, and there's a couple of things that I don't like, like everybody. Says no name changes on an account will occur until the account reflects zero balance. At that time, name change request, new policy application will be required, along with appropriate documentation and name change. So the way I read that is if I have a tenant that moves out that still has utilities at their residence, I've got to pay those utilities before it, it switches to my name. That's the way I read that.
Maybe you're shaking your head. Do you want to speak on that?
You won't, you only, that's only going to affect your account being your name. So whatever the tenant is, it doesn't go with the residence, the property, it will only be you. So that's more like a couple gets divorced, and one of them hits the house, and one of them, one of, that one wants to take their name off of the property. You can't do that unless you're at a zero balance, because we don't want to leave the other one with the bill. If they have to both, if we have to have it at a zero balance, and then the other person that got the house will actually have to come in and do a whole application. So that does nothing if he was a homeowner, it's nothing.
Okay, so it's account, not address?
Right.
Okay. That makes sense.
Yeah.
And the other, the other issue I had was mainly, mainly deposits. So like, if I have a tenant move out and I put the utilities into my name until my next tenant moves in, maybe a week or maybe two, three weeks, I've got to pay a three hundred dollar deposit at each residence before the next tenant moves in. And so the next tenant moves in, you've got to write me a check for my three hundred dollars.
Unless, like, Kitty had talked to us, like, if she owns five properties and she just wants to leave her fifteen hundred dollars on an account and not give it back and forth to her, we could totally do that, so that sits on your account, we don't need the back and forth.
Well, I'm going to have ten properties, that'd be three thousand.
Right, right.
So.
Is there, I was wondering, can I, um, is there a way that, like, in that, I don't know, where if you have been a customer, because like, I don't know how long you've traveled, they, your employees, sorry, our Monroe City, but I could hear our customer in good standing that you have a good?
I mean, that used to count for, whatever you mean, the deposit.
I don't know, I'm just, I don't know anything about it. I'm just wondering if that, or is that not trapable? I don't know.
Well, of course, I mean, you all make the decisions, but we did look at current landlords in town and past landlords in town that have left us with the bill in their name, and it's about six thousand dollars for the city. So if we would have had some sort of deposit on these accounts, most of these would have been paid, because they're less than three hundred dollars. Has she yet?
I'm wondering, do we have any way of filing some kind of lien or anything to, to get that money back for the delinquent stuff? Is there some question there? No?
I mean, we could give a small claims court, but the people, and usually the people, I think the best way to force collection is, you know, a lot of the policies we've already implemented, particularly shutting them off. You know, somebody just, we shut them off, and then their delinquent, they usually skip them down. But we could pursue them. But we could pursue them. It was just going to be urgent request.
Or maybe over a certain dollar amount? I don't know, but I would think that if you're-
We're just looking out for the best interest of Monroe City, and so, that's our suggestion. Uh, we, if it, like I said, if these landlords would have had those deposits on those accounts,
A lot of them wouldn't have.
A lot of them wouldn't pay off.
And you're saying that you would give, he would give his deposit back, like, immediately, uh, because you'd think it was-
I mean, it's just a paperwork.
It is a paper.
I mean, I've got to write a check every time you write a check back.
Our policy is when they, when a, uh, utility goes out of a customer's name, their deposit is applied to their final bill. And then if there's anything left over, they give them a refund check from that. And vice versa, if there's extra, they just still owe the difference, but that is our policy, that it gets applied to a final.
We did not make it through all of the landlords to get that. I mean, that's just a rough go right there. I mean, we have more money on this than that, but that was just to try to look at, so. You never worry about these, right?
Yeah. That's why I, you pay all that shit money.
I mean, they can take the, the utilities and, and shut them off. They would have to put them back in the landlord's name, but then you got rent.
Right.
Or they could stay in the landlord's name. Yeah, there's, there's several different scenarios that we can look at, but we can't keep doing what we were doing because the city is moving like, yeah. I mean, this, it is a big issue.
So, so if you have a landlord that's been on the blacklist in the past, I can see deposits for them and run them again. How many landlords are there in town? I can't imagine there's a limit.
We, we have several. Um, on our, on our list, it's, I think there's fifteen, twenty, they hit two.
I, I would have been updated, but isn't like the residential ones, sort of like, you have to pay the deposit and if you've been a customer for, let's say, a year or something, you get your, it used to be-
It was too.
I mean, we're, yeah, you're right. It was. Uh, we did update the policy last, well, this April, it started, uh, with a new policy and the deposits would be refunded to homeowners after a two-year period, but the other ones would stay on the properties the entire time. A tenant lives there or but if someone buys the property, then they would get their refund back, which we would like to see all accounts keep the deposit at all times to life.
Reviewing that list, there's a couple of larger ones that are pretty significant. I mean, two of them, like, were almost half of the total balance. Have we, so if we pass this policy-
It'd be going forward.
Going forward, as they change over, um, then they'll have to pay those bills in order to get new service. Or to get service in their name, like, for between tenants, right?
Yes, the way we've added some language in here. But if they ever need to have utilities back in their name, before that happens, their previous balances would have to be paid.
On all of their accounts, okay. How often do those two, were all those, was it pre, pre?
Yeah.
Often, yeah, okay. So, that could, that could help that quite quickly.
Do, do, do you want to consider a good standing clause?
I do.
How would we state it?
How do we, how do we word it?
I don't know how to word it.
I would, I would like to say good standing.
I'd eat him.
It's probably not going to, not going to be for people, but I don't know.
How many people do you think a good standing clause could apply to landlords?
One, two, three, four, five?
I mean, how many landlords do you have?
Fifty to twenty.
Okay, and there was what, ten on that list?
That's just a partial list. That's not all of them.
Yeah.
Thanks. May I ask a question? The list, I just noticed something on there that caught, really caught my attention. Um, are, are any of those bills the responsibility of the renter?
No.
None of them are?
No. What was the question? The amount of bills that the city has from renters. I would say, well, when I provided a list, uh, before we passed the ordinance and, or the new policy in April, when I provided that list, it was at eighty plus thousand dollars.
Eighty thousand, I, I understand.
So, now it's even larger than that.
It was just a question. I know it's something on there. I, I'll, I'll talk to you about it tomorrow. It's a very interesting one.
Yeah, because we had a tenant just moved out that had, uh,
It's like, I guess, nineteen seventy something. And because they had a medical, that, the way, shit, and all of it.
And so, these all represent where the utilities were in the name of the owner.
Correct.
And for lack of better choice of words, the owner skipped on those properties.
They just, yeah, they just haven't paid.
And the previous, the previous, the previous, the previous utility policy is what allows people on that list to continue to be landowners renting property. That was very discouraging within this city.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know why we're like, I don't know.
Okay, so, Alderman, Alderman Simpson is, is, is asking if we can come up with a clause for landlords in good standing. Um, Mr. City Attorney, Mr. City Attorney, how would you quali, how would you qualify in good standing? What would be the, what would be the tentative wording on that clause?
I mean, there's lots of ways you could do it, um.
Time?
No, no late payments in five year, last five years, or?
I mean, that's-
I mean, there's lots of tricks you could use.
It's a long time. Yeah, it's a long time. I, I don't know. What do you, what do you think? Twenty-four months, thirty-six months?
I'd do five years if you, I mean-
I mean, you're going to make the list pretty good by then.
Brad? Brad, they're talking about-
What's that?
Mo, they're talking about modifying, uh, utility policy to put in a, uh, tenant in good standing clause, which would mean that you, uh, for those, you or any other, I apologize, you, any, any, any landlord uh, would have to have been in good standing with no late payments for five years.
I just had to be late. I was, I was one day late.
We're not, they're going to say-
And I even got a reminder on my phone two days before, and we took it.
You're killing me. All not paying, all to pay.
So, maybe five years is, oh.
We can't go one month.
That's the first time in twenty seven years.
But one day. Okay, if they haven't been more than two days.
You know, you could get, I mean, I, you could give one late pay, honestly, like, or less than ten day, uh, one time, ten, I don't know.
A week.
I mean, sometimes.
Or if they, you know.
Yeah, with all due respect, Brad, I, I-
It was oversight.
Are much different than all of our landlords, but we are looking out for the city's liability. And that is our main focus, is the city. Our finances are not the greatest, and we are doing what we can to help get things in line, help get things going better, smoother.
The losses that the city has incurred over the last ten, fifteen years because of, uh, not having a, a solid and enforceable utility policy, it has cost the city a lot of money, a lot of money. And what the city clerk's office is attempting to do is to close up all of the, I do not like to use the phrase loophole, that's exactly what they were. And, uh, people soon knew how to abscond on one utility bill and get their name back on another property and not be responsible for the bill they had the last time, and some individuals have done it uh, a, a number of times. And it was because, it was allowed because our policy didn't cover those particular instances. This is a very comprehensive, uh, utility policy, and it was never meant to punish anyone, uh, who had been doing the right thing. It's very difficult to, uh, construct a policy that enables you to prevent the things that have been happening and also, at the same time, not penalize the good guys. I don't know what we're going to do here.
I just wanted to say something earlier, but I don't need to single you out, Adrian, but, uh, in the back of your binders, you'll see the delinquent listing and it's maybe this long. So, if you recall, months ago.
Yes.
And this delinquent listing is from period two. This is just one period back. And from months ago, that was fourth period delinquencies. We no longer have those. We no longer have third period delinquencies. And I could tell you the reason why all of these are on our delinquent list at this point in time. Just because they've talked to us about something, they've had an emergency of some sort, and we've worked with them to, you know, help them, you know, they, they paid part of it here and they're going to pay the rest of it in a couple of days. We have cleaned that up and don't have all of those back delinquent bills anymore. And we just want to continue going forward and with all of our accounts.
When we first started looking at this, our residential delinquent bills were nearly as high as one of our largest customers.
I remember.
And there's only fourteen people on the list?
And I can tell you why they're on there too.
Okay.
I know exactly why.
They should never want.
They reject you.
Yes.
They should never want.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
Now, you stay in the list, so you're a guy, you'd be-
Oh, yeah. It was pages.
Yeah, it was.
So, this period, the, these, on the delinquent list, they're delinquent as of August, is it one month? Is it two?
Two, one.
One.
On that report you gave, it showed a total amount, right?
Yeah.
Shows a total delinquent amount.
Yeah, total delinquent amount, but that's not-
And the amount-
Like, all accounts that have outstanding balance. There's all active accounts, all current customers, they say.
So, how many of these are still on?
Yes.
Payment plans?
I'm sorry.
How many of these are still on payment plans?
I have to look at the list.
Because I, there's a, there's a one, there's one on, well, one on there that's, that's new. That's a pretty good chunk.
Let's see here. The first two are payment plans. Uh, the next one is an ECAP pledge, which means we can't disconnect. They, after we get an ECAP pledge, we cannot disconnect for thirty days.
Right, well, it looks like that, once that payment applies, it'll be zero.
Yes, uh huh.
Right, okay.
Same with the next one. Um, the one after that, this lady's daughter, uh, got to go to the Junior Olympics and she couldn't afford her whole utility bill because she needed to go to North Carolina and take her daughter to the Junior Olympics. And so, we said, yes, I mean, we worked with her. She paid some of it. She's going to have the rest of it this month.
And it's not that much.
The two with the same name disregard those. They were a budget customer. They've come off, they've come off budget billing and they now have a zero balance. There, there's, the next one after that is a payment plan. The next one after that, he had a water leak and so, he's paying six hundred dollars a month on that. We're working with him. The next one, that one, um, they're a problem.
I'm about to share a share on that.
They're a problem landlord.
I'm about to share a share on that.
Uh, the one above, the one six.
Oh, yeah.
That's one that has a lot to disappear in the middle of the night.
Yeah, they're on the list.
Yeah, they're on the other list too.
Yeah. So, I mean, all of these, I mean, we're, we don't, uh,
Yeah.
We're just-
On the, on the, the landlords that own the property, even their lien list on the bills, six thousand dollars, whatever, why can't you put a lien against that property or the property owner? Until they're like, or over there.
Which is faster.
Well, you have to go to court and get a judgment, or you got a lien. It doesn't sound, I mean, if it's, if it's an old bill, it hasn't been paid, that's not like they're in the middle of it, or something like that. But when they get shut off by their living costs, I mean, they're going to come up with a money, if they're-
So, the next time one of their units turns over.
They can get remedy.
Right, this new policy.
Yeah.
New policy, not that they don't put it in their name, but they just leave the utilities off until the next tenant comes in, then you'll never get that money back.
Well, you can do that. I say, we can have it.
Now, winter is not-
A total mess, so.
And it's coming.
You can't disconnect, though. What, 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 what did I miss?
We can, we can have to honor the cold weather rule.
Cold, but that doesn't apply to landlords. Does not, does not apply to municipalities.
Right.
No, I mean, I agree with Brad. I mean, if they get new, a few months from now, if that's not getting whittled down, then, yeah, we need to do something. I mean, you can draw a border. Take some kind of action.
Yeah.
Because that would be, uh, you know, the mayor, that's a loophole if you just keep everything shut off and keep it in the tenant's name.
And it may be a simple, send a letter, tell them what you're getting ready to do, or make that.
Exactly.
But if they're not hearing enough from you, they're, maybe not hurting you to get this here.
Well, because they've been, they've been following these loopholes, get away with it for a long time, so why would they, you know, they're, they're working that system, so, until, yeah.
So, you know, you owe this balance, the next time you turn over a unit, we're not going to give you utilities until this balance is satisfied. This is for a warning.
That is a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I mean, just to notify those bigger accounts.
And if they find a loophole, then we'll address that. Yeah, some other way.
What, what did we decide about, Mr. Fornish concerns?
So, I think the issue we're talking about is the deposits for the landlords, correct?
Correct.
On a good standing landlord. I feel like we're punishing the good ones because the bad ones are taking advantage. And I don't know if there's something that we could do for the good ones to not have to punish them. That's my question.
I don't want to use this analogy, but what would Amaran do? What, what would a co-op do?
Cut it off in a heartbeat.
I know we're a small town and I know there's a difference between the two, uh.
There's the other option about the land, I mean, about, but nobody wants to hear that option.
Go ahead and talk about it.
But let's, let's just talk about it and we'll just throw it out there because I think we talked about it last time. There is a way that you can go around this landlord tenant, the, the deposit, and some towns do it. The landlord has to keep the deposits or the utilities in their name. No renter ever puts it in their name. You have to put that deposit. Now, that landlord can charge a thousand dollar deposit that we cannot, but then they stay in his name. He has control over whether, if he can't get a tenant out, pass it up, because the police have to deal with this, everybody has to deal with it, trying to get dead meat renters out. There's children that fall in the loop that puts all that out. If the landlord kept their, the, um, utilities in their name, they can tell us to shut them off today and it doesn't matter if there's kids in that house, I mean, because they're in his name. But as we take a contract with the tenant, that stops all that. So, if you wanted to take the option of the landlords leaving all properties in their name, there's no going back and forth. They charge a bigger deposit to try to recoup their money. So, like, that, I mean, there is the, there is other options that we have tried not to talk too much about, but, but we have looked at every option in this office, trying to figure out what the right or wrong thing is.
And that saves a lot of time.
Paperwork for all of us in the office.
Guys going out shutting things off, going back and turning things on. I mean, there, it just saves so much.
It really does. Because when, anytime you turn gas off at a property, someone has to be there. Cause when, anytime you turn gas off at a property, someone has to be there to go turn it on, go in, check all the appliances, check everything. It's a process for gas and water. Someone needs to be at the property, check the leaks.
Check the leaks, yeah.
So there's some times when it's, the landlord only has the property in their name for two days, maybe, or days. And then our guys are back out there again, you know, or if they shut them off today, they're gonna turn them on tomorrow. We gotta get them back out there to get all that done.
Spend your entire week doing that.
Is, is the biggest offender electric usually? It's hard.
Depends what time of year it is.
Yeah.
You know, electric is what we shut off first.
Right.
And then if they still don't pay, two days later, we shut off the remaining.
It's easier than having, you know, not sending anybody out.
Sounds like you have a lot of good things.
Information is helpful, cause I mean, I hadn't thought through all of that. And I was trying to find a creative way to help her out, but.
We've called up the communities.
I'm sure, yeah, I can tell it's well thought out.
I mean, the, between all of us in the office and the mayor who sat in with us too. And we can't designate a different set of deposits for renters versus homeowners. We can't do that.
Right.
So we don't wanna, we don't want to up deposits for everybody.
Well, we currently have a standing now for homeowners is two years. Is that right?
Yes, I believe so.
Is it typically the renters that leave us holding the bag?
Typically, but we do have homeowners that leave. They're filed bankruptcy or they just need to move. We don't know what's happened. I mean, if the, if the deposit is the holdup, I, I think that's minor compared to what some of these utility bills could get.
Yeah.
With this new policy, we're not even gonna give the deposit, the deposit back after two years, right? Even if they're a homeowner?
That's the current policy.
Right, but with this, the new one, we, we don't want, we wanna keep the deposit at all.
Right. All deposits would stay with each account owner until they move out, sell.
So does that mean that a landlord that owns a rental property won't get his deposit back ever?
Until they sell the property.
Until they sell the property?
Well.
That, that's a little different situation there. It's a rental property, so you would get it back.
Okay.
Each time.
And you'll get your deposit back.
And it's probably the only way that makes it all work.
Well, yeah, cause if there was a final bill, I mean, you gotta make sure that.
I see it.
And Brad, the tenant pay, you pay the deposit because there are times when it may not be occupied. Instead of having the tenant pay the deposit.
Well, tenant pays the deposit when, when the utilities are returning.
Okay.
Then I can buy the deposit back.
Gotcha, gotcha.
For a short time, but I did.
Okay.
And before, we used to never charge a twenty dollar service charge when we take it back into a landlord's name. But there again, the cost of all this paper. You have to, you know, twenty dollars for us to go, you know? It has to be done. Now, during the summer, that, I can think about this last time, if, if he didn't want, if he knows he's gonna rent it in two days and he already, if he doesn't wanna turn it back on in his name and pay that twenty dollars for those two days, he has that option during weather like this.
Right.
I mean, that's all up to him, not us.
Depends on how clean they left it, huh?
I, I mean, I would say that. There's really no way.
No.
Well, and it's not like we have to shut off three grand at one time. Dude.
I, I see, it definitely is, it would be a pain to do it each time you have to go back and forth. But unfortunately, it's, fortunately, it's kind of the nature of the business, it's a pain every time you gotta switch to the utilities and you gotta move a renter, huh? Dude, so.
I mean, I've heard, I've heard everybody's side of the story. I'm comfortable with what everybody else said.
I mean, if you know it's only gonna be two days, can we just take a check and hang on to it for two days?
No.
You know?
No, cause you don't need what you did up there and guess somebody, yeah, here's a check there.
Yeah, find a box of checks. Ten years from now.
Yeah.
We don't.
This, this is still on the agenda.
Right. Okay.
Okay, you good?
I'm good.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Brad.
Thanks, Brad.
Yeah, thank you very much. You just made our job a lot easier, I appreciate it. Council, committee reports. First on we have is planning and zoning. It appears that there's a meeting set for September fifth at five P M. Parks and Recreation, this is Yates.
Last night, I fell asleep on the couch about seven o'clock, so I need to move fast.
Uh-oh, you had five minutes.
Pretty close.
My wife went home, my wife bothered me. So, Park and Cemetery Committee met Tuesday night. And I have about six or seven things to report on and to ask responses on. We would like to have permission to go out for bids to fix the leak in Saint Jude's Church or to be able to hire someone and find out their recommendation and get the job done. We've been kicking the can down the road on that leak in the church for the last two administrations. Now is a really good time because to get it fixed because it's dry and it's probably gonna require a bucket truck to get up there and fix the problem. Then the other thing on the Saint Jude's Church is we're continuing to try to get someone to come here to look at the windows and so that we can move forward, find out what it's gonna cost. Believe it or not, we've had a couple of people interested in, I think unofficially, to helping with that problem. But I don't think I'm probably at liberty to mention who they are, so. So I guess the first thing is, I'd like to know how you wanna proceed on that church problem.
Do we have a cost or is that what you're asking to get the cost defined?
Yes.
Is that the roof leak?
Yes, it's been, it's been leaking for several years.
Well, I mean, I guess, I mean, it'll, those leaks will deteriorate and it's gonna get worse.
It's all really damaged plaster on the inside of the church. Someone put a piano in there and they put it right underneath the leak and damaged the piano. I don't know who did that, but it didn't used to be in there, so.
So basically, you're looking for approval about for bids or looking for somebody to?
Or to.
Get an estimate.
Or to, if, if there's a city employee that could do it, we just need to get off the center and get something better. Before long, it'll be a floor problem as well.
Yes.
Uh, the city employee said they could not fix it.
Could, I think.
It was too big.
We know we're gonna go out for bid, I would like to know how much estimate would an engineer or architect or somebody can give us an estimate on. I mean, I just don't wanna say that we don't have a scope of work either. We don't even know what we need to tell them to do.
Is it big enough that it needs an engineer?
Well, someone suggested that at our meeting Tuesday night too, that we ask an engineer to look at it, but that's gonna be another expense.
Yeah. Well, how would we even know how to write up the scope work?
Mister Mayor, who took pictures of that a while back?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Someone with the city took pictures of it a while back.
That would have been Curie Lee.
Okay.
And what?
I guess that's the question, do, do we know what is needed to fix it?
It's in a valley. It's running down inside the building. It's, I don't know what it needs.
Chris, Chris Whelan reported that in Chris's opinion, the, the repair work that was done previously was probably not done correctly.
I would think because the roof's not that old, I mean, right, I mean, it's.
Well, I.
Not old enough it should be leaking, I mean, it's.
I, I didn't take the opportunity to climb up there and look, but you told me it looked like a wash basin.
When you look at the outside, it looks like it was not done correctly.
Is there any warranty on that?
I don't.
I'm sure it's not.
I'd say it was, I would say it's been bought a while back.
Steve, are you aware of specialized restrictions because the fact that that building has been, what, what's the trade for?
It's still a red string.
So do you have to have a special type of company come do the repair work?
Not that I know of.
Good enough.
Has to be, has to be to its original condition.
Well, that's gonna be interesting, cause I, I think that what Chris described to me probably is not its original condition. But I think what we do, we just call a couple of local contractors to actually do roofing repair and have them come take a look at it. That would be the cheapest way to do it, at least to get an understanding what their, what their thoughts are. If they say, oh my gosh, you have to have a, you know, a structural engineer over here, then we'll have that discussion. Is that fair?
So do you want, or will you get Mister Lee to contact a couple?
We will find someone from the city administration to make the contact. Alex, write this down. Con, we'll contact two or three, I wanna say local, that could be Quincy, Hannibal, Mobiley, Macon, whatever. Local roofing companies, they have them come take a look at it. We will take them inside, show them inside the building, try to do our best to describe the situation, ask them to give us quotation. Fair or not?
Thank you.
You probably should.
It's a start.
Get three.
Three, yeah, we can get three.
On the cemetery, the only thing I need to report there is that we spent three thousand of five thousand dollars budgeted to straighten up and support tombstones. Jackie Pangborn put that list together. I'm not sure why, we only spent three thousand. I haven't talked to Jackie about it, but they moved it to work. On the North Park Grant, we are preparing the specs for bids on playground equipment and that. And Mary Kendrick are working on that. I met with Mary again this morning to talk about that. Uh, we still have a concern about the price for installing playground equipment. And I, at a prior meeting, I told you all that we had gotten a quote from a company for playground equipment that meant we didn't have to get other bids. But that was before I was introduced to federal guidelines for federal money. So now we're trying to get multiple bids. But the quote that we had earlier was forty-eight thousand dollars to install the equipment. So we're hoping that several city crews, city employees, maybe some volunteer labor could perform that task when the time comes. We're looking for a place to store that equipment when it comes. Because in my mind, I'm thinking we'd like to have that equipment purchased because the company that I have been talking to told me that they would probably have another, another hiking price on January one. So someone, our committee suggested that we talk to someone at Pace about storing it there. It would also be a place we could put it together if there's electricity. The other thing on the grant is that you all have a public announcement for the paper that you received the grant. We'd like to have permission to go ahead and run that in the newspaper. Hopefully, you've seen that. Mary Kendrick put that together. So I'd like to just have you all give us the approval to do that.
Did everyone have an opportunity to review the letter? Entertaining a motion to approve publishing the letter as presented.
Make the motion.
They have a motion on the floor to approve publishing the, the letter regarding the grant, news release for the grant.
I'll second.
They have a motion to second to approve the news release for the grant. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Prove say no, motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, the next thing that we wanted to talk about and get permission on is the Winter Street Park. We've been talking about a pickleball court. And so we would like to have permission just to investigate putting a pickleball court on the basketball court at Winter Street Park. And with the idea of still being used as a basketball court as well. And I guess what, the reason we're asking permission is we don't wanna do a whole lot of work if, if council thinks that's a bad idea.
As in, a lot of them are playing a lot of the.
Cause they need a back, some sort of backboard, don't they? Or they need some sort of backstop?
That is not, we haven't gotten that far.
Oh, okay.
Uh, we know that the court is big enough. And that's about all we know. We don't wanna, the person who's working on that, I think, just didn't wanna invest a whole lot of time in it if that's not a feasible option for that. Does anybody know where that basketball court?
I was gonna ask where Winter Street was.
Winter Street is the one that goes from the old, from the old bank in.
To the south side of the cemetery.
Yeah.
Yep.
By Francis White.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, I know where that was at.
Right.
Yeah, that's where, kinda where it was.
It's supposed to be the best basketball court.
It does get you, I, I hear people like that.
It really does get you down.
There's people that hold on.
So.
I mean, though, my like, because like, is that they use it a lot for basketball, whether it's a pickleball.
Maybe it is, I just can't see it.
I mean, so I would have to come back to.
Oh, just ideas of placement. There are other places that probably could, we just wanna make sure that we, like, like if we ask the city if we could use the actual tennis courts that we used to have, you know, maybe they could move their stuff somewhere else, but I think the city owns that now. I mean, the school owns.
Yeah.
But.
We also mentioned the concrete pad at South Park, that there is somebody that uses a skateboard, according to there. One thing we didn't discuss was the, what used to be the skating rink at South Park, but I've heard that concrete is not real suitable for anything. So I guess all I'm asking is permission to investigate and then we'll report back to you at some point.
Yeah, I think it'd be a good project for the city that's pretty popular, I know, but a lot of people don't, so.
Okay, the last thing, cause Mary told me this meeting was gonna be fast.
I had no reason to believe it would be at the time that I made that statement.
Until.
The last thing is the topic of prayer. Because if you look at the mural out here, it says that Monroe City is the queen of the prayer. And if you go back to the eighteen thirties when this area was settled, it was all prayer and rest. We even have a street on the north side of town that's called Prairie Street. But we don't have any prayer. Seems a little.
Is it in the mural? Pardon me? Is there prayer in the mural?
You know, I haven't looked that close to see if there is.
There is.
We even have a business that's called Queen of, Queen of Prairie.
Yeah.
Uh, so we had Bob Kendrick come to our meeting the other night because he is a master naturalist. And he's involved in a lot of this kind of work. He said they have, I think, seven prairie plots that they're working on right now. So we can get assistance from the natural, I always call it MRCS, and then I have to think about what it's called. Natural, what I told you earlier, Penny. Natural Resources and Conservation Service. Natural Resources and Conservation Service. So it can be, you know, like, the old prairie grasses, you know, were like three or four feet tall. I have a pollinator plot on one of my farms, that it can be pollinator seeds and plants. We talked about doing some of this at South Lake, lots of southeast corner or southwest corner of the cemetery, the airport, maybe at the golf course. I don't think this costs a lot of money, it's a slow process though. Like, I have a pollinator plot that I have, I seeded almost two years ago. My wife and I went there a month or so ago with an app that tells us what the plants are, and it's kinda disappointing. But I tried last winter to buy the same seed again, and the lady said, no, I can't sell it to you because you need to give it more time. And so Bob emphasized that it is, it's a slow process, but he's also talking like it's not a lot of money. And they, his group will help do the seeding and the planting and all that, they don't do the maintenance. But maintenance is pretty small, it might need to be mowed like a foot or two high twice a summer when it's getting established to kind of control weeds and that thing, that thing. So we would like permission to pursue that a little farther, and report back to you.
I, I would say please do. Do we need a motion for that? Okay, just do it. You know, when Steve and I talked at great length, as a matter of fact, the Park's Director may have been very busy, and we don't hear all of it. But he brought up a good point, and it really tickled me to hear him say it this way, he said, you know, if we put it in a prairie, you don't have to mow it as often. I said, hey, there's all cost savings.
Natural grass.
And nothing against our locally owned businesses that operate mowing services, but yeah, every dollar we don't spend on that, we can spend someplace else to provide some other immediate benefit to the citizens of Monroe City. So yeah, I was very interested in hearing that part of it, and not having a prairie, but being queen of the prairie, sounds like a problem.
Well, along with what he's probably already heard and learned, there's what, there's some really significant studies that have come out that if they return, then a specific area back to what it was most like two or three, four, five hundred years ago. It helps reduce the erosion, it helps the growth of the proper trees, and reduces some of the invasive species of the others, and it helps soil drainage, everything. And there's actually some huge grants coming out for areas that are wanting to do this in a major magnitude because it would cut down on the burning, these major forest fires, because if all the underbrush and all the stuff that we had introduced ourselves wasn't there, it would naturally have taken care of itself at smaller rate.
Well, that certainly sounds exciting.
It's kinda huge.
For those of you that are interested in the carbon, I think it's gonna sequester carbon. When my wife and I went to this plot a month or so ago, it was full of butterflies.
That's fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you for your report, sir.
Yes.
You skipped over four?
Over what?
Number four.
What was number four?
Cemetery.
No, I missed it.
Mowing.
We didn't talk about mowing the cemetery.
That's what it says, that we believe local mows need to revisit bids for the next time around?
It's like their July meeting minutes, they have had a meeting since then.
Oh, oh, okay.
He did touch on cemetery as far as the amount of money that was proposed for cemetery stone repair or whatever the word for it is.
One thing that he reminded me of though is that we, we didn't do this thing, is, because I've never, oh, no, I did get it from you all, cemetery policy. And I overlooked that, so we want to revise our cemetery policy, but Penny, we didn't talk about this. Because of people burying someone on top of another person. And I thought that Holy Rosary had a policy, and it seems like Gary Iger says they don't have a policy on that. But there are several instances of people burying ashes on top of a casket. And I think we need to develop a policy on that, and I completely forgot about that.
Do you have, do you have a?
Somebody gave me the policy.
I did, I saw it.
And I need to find it and read it.
I can send you another one.
That might be good, because I, actually, I was gonna take that to the state fair with me and try to read it, turns out I wouldn't have had time anyway, but, yeah, thank you.
There was hope, thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
All right, next we have economic development.
Mary and Mary, we met on, I think, great day, August nineteenth. And we just kinda discussed, I think I related this afternoon, sent it to you there, or you mentioned, I think, in reply, that you would work on it. But we just wanna know our overall capacity for utilities, and talk about trying to be attractive for new businesses to come. So how do, how are we rate against our competitive cities and stuff, you know? And maybe also have readily available certain site information to list, if we get, might be nice to just know some of those details as well. What else? I think we did.
I wanna bring up the next meeting following Labor Day, so.
We won't be meeting on that day.
Right, yeah.
Why not?
Is Tuesday available, as far as anybody else using it? I don't know how that works for schedules.
What? Do you want me to send out a request?
Yeah, I forgot to mention it the last meeting. Does that work for, does that Tuesday work for you?
Yeah.
Okay. Would it work for you? Well, that, I'll make sure. Tap the battle, so, yeah.
Okay, moving right, thank you, Lori, moving right along, administration. Nuisance, Review Board, Public Safety. Okay, then we'll move on to Department Courts, first on the list is Police Department.
Yes, we did submit a couple expenditure requests. The first one was for vehicles, for new tires, for three of our four vehicles for the winter. Turpents have sent the, they've been with estimates, which should be in their review. And I thought those are just estimates, so we'll do a check a little bit.
I see three.
Right, three of the four cars. We are putting the SRO car on hold for the moment, just because it's not used on water patrol. It's basically a school office pump. So we put that one on hold for now unless it becomes an issue. So we're crossing for the main, maybe clean cars for winter safety.
How many miles do we put on each car here?
Oh, gosh, that, I'm gonna cancel for a moment. I'm doing a loss on what they log in and fuel down. Mile that just is recorded, maybe can fuel, so.
So these estimates also include oil changes and things like that, does that need to be done when we get?
Those are done pretty frequently because cars literally run twenty-four seven. I actually do have an appointment tomorrow for our K nine car for oil change, and Monday for car one oh two for oil change.
So the estimates you would want us to approve, it's just for the tires?
For the tires, yeah, since they're a bigger expenditure.
And dollars.
We can't avoid just the general maintenance, keep them running, so.
Kim, have you checked with any other vendors?
No, Turpents are mainly the O two, so we really haven't. Whenever we have done price comparisons in the past on different things, Turpents always come to the lowest.
Well, the question I, the question I have.
Here it says they're purchased at state bid pricing on this front sheet, does that mean that we're getting, is that what?
Is it a separate?
Most of the state bid stuff, like, there's a certain.
They do bid differently, yes, and when I contacted Turpents for the quotes, I did have to specify that.
Are other vendors capable of bidding that?
I can call, like, Panther Tire here in North City, if you'd like a second bid.
Yeah.
Or maybe even Tri-County?
Yeah.
Just to get three?
Three.
I, I'm confused, if, if we purchase the tires on the state bid, then.
It should all be the same.
Excuse me?
Should all be the same price?
Yes.
Yeah, like, that's like a pre-approved, like, number.
What I don't, what I don't understand, and I don't understand, because I don't know the answer, is how does the city of Monroe City purchase the tires using the state bid price?
It's usually the vendor that is set up to be a state bid.
And so then whoever is installing the tires purchases the tires from that vendor at the cost stated.
By the state.
And we know that this is the cost stated how?
There is a. Did y'all get them off of a website, Kim?
I'm not sure how Travis did it, I just called him and asked him to send me the estimates for the week's evening.
Well, if it does you any good, I'll price them online, and these are cheaper online, that's all I know. I don't know the rest of it, how, the mechanics of it. We could do that, huh? If it's Mo Move, we could do that. We'll check into it on the Mo Move site.
But do you want her to go forward and get, do you want her to get three more bids, two more bids?
I personally would appreciate it if she did, especially since, and certainly nothing against this vendor, I like them too, but we have others in town that are within our city limits.
I will get those tomorrow and just bring them over, yeah.
Perfect. Please, please, we'll stick on their policy.
Yeah.
I see you have some other items on here that you.
The only other items were some whiteboards that I looked up on Amazon today. The, the, the least expensive of the two is for our K nine officer to track his training and deployment of Athena. And the bigger one is for the department, for doing like evidence and tracking and different things through the department.
Do we have any of these downstairs?
Some new recording protocols.
We had a book downstairs before, because, yeah, and Jason at one time had talked and said that he was gonna ask the school if maybe they.
I did ask the school, Tony messaged me back this morning, that's why that one came in so late. Tony messaged me back this morning that they do not have anything at the school right now.
Cause some of our own gas guys and stuff were looking for some, so we were in the basement before last year looking for twenty here, and we didn't have any.
You know, I had checked with you all, and I checked with Tony before I put in the bid.
Thank you.
For the two whiteboards, you know, without the shipping, it'd be under a hundred and sixty dollars.
So the total is a hundred and fifty-nine dollars and forty-four cents?
Prior to shipping.
Before the shipping.
Like, before shipping?
Before shipping?
That's a pretty big box.
This is free delivery.
I think once you hit a certain amount with Amazon, it's usually free shipping, I'm not gonna.
Usually it's thirty-five or fifty dollars depending on the things, but yeah, for the minimum, it's free shipping. And these say free shipping, so.
I see free return.
Well, you see free delivery.
Oh, yeah, I see it now, yeah.
So either, yeah, either one of these show free deliveries.
I make a motion to go ahead and, permission to go ahead and. Permission to go ahead and.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
We have a, we have a motion in the second on the floor to approve the two items requested by the Police Department, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries, was that sufficient, Donette?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I appreciate it, thank you all.
Thank you. Fire? Electric? Water? Did on purpose. Gas?
The only thing I wanted to mention real quick with the electric is the employee that put in his reservation, Mayor Plon, and he gave us about two weeks to put it.
Water?
You safe, sir?
You're welcome.
Just got a couple things. First off, the mayor contacted me about a leak team fire hydrant at the corner of Long and Gordon Street. We discussed, you know, what needed to be done with it. He called me on my way home, I didn't have all the information, but we do have one fire hydrant in, or at the, at the ship. So if I do need to replace it, I already have that fire hydrant. And if I end up doing that, I'll be coming back with pricing for fire hydrants, because we need to have one on hand at all times, they are very, very expensive. But we are gonna try to do a shoe repair kit on that current hydrant, and let's see if we can fix it without replacing it.
Great.
So that's what we're gonna do there. Second thing is, I put, or I sent out to all our chemical vendors to get pricing on chemicals, and I'll be able to provide that to you at the next meeting. The bids are due tomorrow by noon, so I'll have a bid tab that you'll have at the next, next meeting to show them what our chemical costs will be. I'm gonna be doing this every six months on all chemicals except for coagulant, just because the whole process to, to big coagulant is, it's extremely extensive. And they have to come here and do jar testing, and that's also the most important chemical that we use, and we finally have one that is doing what it's supposed to do. Since I've been here, we've been through a couple of them, and they just don't work. This one has been working for us for two and a half years now, and, but anyway, just thought I'd mention that. Third, I gave everybody. Third, I, uh, gave everybody a piece of paper whenever I first got here. I just wanted to explain this. There was a, a four-inch submersible pump at the water plant that burned up about three years ago. I brought it to the council and they decided at that point, we were definitely switching to Clarence Cannon. No need to replace this thing, so we need it in order to drain the basins. So anytime we have to drain the basins for cleaning, I have to make sure there's enough water in the water towers, and then we have to go as fast as we can because it takes us a day and a half to clean the basins, to drain everything, clean it, then refill where we can start sending water to town. It's now taking us almost a full day, a full twenty-four hours to drain because we don't have enough pumping capacity. So the mayor suggested I go ahead and put together, uh, a, a bid spec and, uh, send it out to vendors, which I did. I am not asking for a submersible pump because three years ago when the other one went out, uh, the re, uh, repair on that one was nine thousand dollars, a new one was sixteen thousand dollars. So what I'm gonna, what I'm looking at is this is actually a trash pump that will, it, it doesn't go in the water, it's, it's out and it just has a hose that goes in uh, and, and, and runs this, uh, the four-inch pump is what I'm really looking at, and it pumps roughly five hundred and thirty gallons a minute at twenty-foot head. And that's all, that, that's max what we're looking at. It will be only a clean water pump, uh, it won't, uh, leave the water plant. We have a three-inch, uh, trash pump that we also are currently using right now that pumps about two hundred and seventy-five gallons a minute at the twenty-foot head that we would bring out in the event that we had a water leak and I had to de-water the hole, but the back truck actually is what we use anymore instead of hauling that big thing around, so. So I would be running, whenever I'm draining the, the basins, I would run a four-inch pump that I'm, I'm proposing that we would purchase and then a three-inch pump. Now, whenever I put the bid out, I asked for all the pipe and all the accessories to make all this work. Whenever the bids came in, I thought that the accessories were extremely, uh, uh, the prices, the prices are exaggerated, so. But I couldn't, the, the bids were due today at three o'clock, so I couldn't turn around and give pricing on the piping and everything, and so that's not on here. I don't have what I'm gonna be able to get, what I need for the pump. So I'm not asking for you guys to approve anything tonight because I'm not, it's, it's not all done, but I wanted to give you pricing on the pump so you could look at it, and if you had any questions before I go back to the vendors, um, on this item. I, I am gonna suggest in the four-inch pump pricing, which is the top, you know, the, the top spreadsheet there, the, the bottom one from Hydrokinetics for the three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, that would be the pump and the wheel kit, and then I will come back with the accessories. What the accessories are, if anybody knows what cam locks are, uh, it's just a, uh, it's a male and female and you put it together, and then it has two little tabs that you pull down to cinch it tight, it has a gasket in there. Uh, and, uh, I'll get a hundred foot of hose and I'll cut that down into probably fifteen foot sections and then have it where they can all couple together. If you've ever dealt with suction hoses, you just can't handle, uh, a hundred foot section at all at the same time, so. You know, knocking it down to fifteen, even twenty foot, and, uh, so if anybody has any questions on that? Nope?
So it'll make it, so you can pump it down a lot quicker?
Yes, yeah, the additional five hundred gallons a minute pumping capacity is gonna be huge.
This will stay, this would stay at?
The water plant.
Okay.
For clean water only?
For clean water, yes. It would be for, uh, I mean, there would be some silt and stuff in there that, that we're pumping out of, and then that's what we're actually, we pump down these basins so we can clean the silt out of the bottom. We do it at a minimum of twice a year, so.
Okay, we'll come back with the rest of the information worth considering. Uh, one thing I didn't hear you mention, but maybe you did and I didn't hear, Summer Street, uh, the fire hydrant at Summer Street that was damaged here a few years ago, did you mention that?
No, I did not. Uh, you and I discussed that, and, uh, like I said, I told you on the phone, I had to discuss it with, uh, the fire chief also. And Chief, if you wanna say anything about this, remember that fire hydrant corner, so, and, uh, Kim and I discussed it, and, uh, he felt that he could fight the fires with the other hydrants in the area, but you had mentioned that somebody else had a question about our question, the ability to do so, and I still haven't replaced it because I know you said you could do it, uh, so.
Yeah, we carry a thousand foot, four-inch line, which is our supply line, so we've gotta be able to go pretty far away to, to where we need to go.
Yeah, they would just.
What's the fire hydrant cost?
Uh, there, I'm gonna say with this, uh, with everything you need to install it, we're gonna be between two and twenty-five hundred dollars, two thousand and twenty-five hundred dollars.
See, I, the question, um, I understand you have the ability to do so. I don't know how much longer it's gonna take you to accept access.
Yeah.
That far away.
A thousand feet's a lot of hose.
Time, time is really, really critical.
Hydrants, so close to.
Well, personally, I would recommend the board to buy enough hydrants that we have a spare, one to fix Summer Street, and if we end up having to replace the one, uh, at Long, then we would, it would need three, if you had one spare, maybe you want more than one spare, but I, I do not subscribe to being able to throw down another five hundred foot of hose, it's gonna take time. If it's my house burning, I'm gonna be unhappy. Seriously, I don't live on Summer Street, but I'm trying to make a point. When I say that you can, it doesn't mean that you should. What's, what's the board think about that?
Yeah, it, I mean, every minute counts when you're trying to get water.
It, it does, um, there's, as far as what is there, that, that, there is one house on the corner of Summer and Border Street. So if you drive down Summer and you don't make that corner, you go up in that driveway. It's all trailers on the south side of Summer Street where we're talking about. Is anybody feeling with me?
Trailer, like trailer houses?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's.
You're on East Summer.
Or on West Summer.
By the curl of the tracks.
Okay, gotcha, I have what you know.
Okay, yeah, I was trying, yeah, it's, I, I mean, I, I mean, yeah, I'm kinda lying like they could if, if we if we think it's a good idea to fight the fire again, I mean, twenty-five hundred dollars amongst everything else, like, it's actually, I think it's, well, it's, but but I also, you know, uh, would defer some to expert opinions on like, do we need a fire hydrant?
I would like to hear Murma's com, comments on this.
Well, with where we are here, uh, that house on the corner, chances are Rich isn't gonna wanna set up right there anyway, cause he's, the hydrant is gonna be too close to the house and he needs to be back a little bit to set up, you know, if, if, I, I'm speaking for you here.
Campbell's house.
I guess that's.
Just one backup.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh, I was thinking, uh, in Summer.
So then you, you have right up here on Boulder, I think it's Boulder Avenue, there's one right there, and then just round the corner, not too far up the lane, so you know, you can't be right on top of the houses when you're, when you're trying to fight that fire, so the, there's a good chance the fire truck's gonna be further away from the trailer houses or that house on the end anyway. Uh, but I, I, I understand the mayor's concern, I really do, and there was a hydrant there, we can go ahead and put it back, I don't have a problem with it, it's just, uh, you just gotta tell me what you wanna do.
Well, here's my concern, now that I know exactly where it's at, you got a lot of little houses really close together and that could just annihilate a whole little mini-community. I think that's a small price to pay to have quick water access.
I have to agree with that.
Yeah.
Well, um, you have one pump in stock?
Yeah, uh, one hydrant in stock, yes.
I'm sorry, one hydrant in stock, pump on the brain. Uh, one hydrant in stock, you're going to do something over on Long, see if you can.
In Gordon, yes.
In Gordon, see if you can correct that. I would think that, uh, if it's okay with the board, would be okay if, uh, People Services contacts the mayor's office with the results of the repair activity over on Long Street, and if the repair activity on Long Street is unsuccessful, we would then ask them to install the, cause that's, that's an issue over there too. To install the spare fire hydrant over on Long Street and then get both, uh, get, uh, excuse me, bids to us for two more. One would be installed, uh, on Summer, and then, uh, the other one would be a spare, we should have at least one spare, as George recommended at all point in time, uh, at all points. You guys agree with that?
I agree with that.
Yeah, okay.
Do we need a motion for that or anything?
Nope.
Okay, we'll just act on it, thank you, George.
Okay, any other questions?
No, thank you for all your help, I appreciate it.
No problem, sir.
George's been very, very helpful on this, uh, issue working with Flacken Beach. He made the contacts, got everybody to get on the conference call, and I really appreciate his help. Okay, moving right along.
Mayor, sorry to interrupt.
No problem.
On the electric report Kerry Lee did provide quotes for those chicken switches?
That's correct, he did, I'm glad you brought that up. So that'd be ten D, uh, let me take a look at that.
That's a chicken switch.
Let me, let me explain.
I think that's a colloquial term in that you don't have to stand next to the box when you, uh, set it off, so in case your chicken, uh.
You don't wanna die.
Cause you don't wanna die. If something goes wrong, then, uh.
Basically, you can be in the other room and hit the remote.
Yes, the, the rules for, um, engaging, uh, disconnect on those very, very large voltage high voltage disconnects, you have to require, uh, NFPA clothing which, uh, won't catch on fire, uh, it's quite complex. Uh, what is called a chicken switch because it allows them to turn those big relays off and not be present when they're turned off, it's done mechanically. Uh, these switches that he has proposed, we've talked about this a few times, that he's proposed are, they're battery operated, which means that, um, if you don't have power, you can still use them, which seems to make a lot of sense. I do not know, is his recommended, he stayed in here? He actually was going to be here tonight to discuss this, but something must've come up. I think we're gonna have to table this until he can be here to tell us which one, which one, uh, I, I'm embarrassed to say that.
Price is, price difference is.
Yeah, there's quite a bit of difference here, so I'm not sure what.
I have to apologize, I believe he actually told me which one that he was going to want to purchase, but I cannot, uh, I cannot recall it, and I don't have a note, so we'll table that.
One's wireless, one's a wired remote?
Say it again?
One is wireless and the other one is a wired remote?
It was, it was, the, the one he showed me was a. Yeah, I can't answer, I won't answer. So looking at these, you've got one at thirteen, one at seven, and then a one at fourteen, four fifty-nine.
Now, is he, I thought they only needed one, and these are two different options. That was my impression, that they could, they just move it to each one as they need to turn them on.
That's correct.
And one is, one is a wired remote, which is, is cheaper than the wireless remote.
We're gonna have to have him, we're gonna have to have him, uh. He wanted to have him give us his presentation. Okay, gas, street, airport, Mosswood, pool. Anything I'm missing, City Clerk? All right, presentation of bills and approval of payments, tab eleven, I believe.
Uh, Fletcher Reinhardt, that was part of the, that's part of the big transformer equipment, right, the seventy-three hundred?
It's a motor for, uh, something.
I'm, 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 I'm certain you're correct.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills as presented.
We have a motion to approve bills payable, we have second.
Second.
We have a motion second to approve bills payable, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries.
Real quick, has everyone seen the credit card statement and signed off on it?
Yeah.
Okay, oh.
I haven't seen.
Do you want me?
Excuse me?
That, that's, uh, one thing that we just start doing, whenever we have credit card purchases, um, you know, just from experience, the auditors like forward to the council to view those and initial and sign off on the card, on the statement, so that's going around right now.
Oh, okay, I, I'm sorry. It's held up, no one else has seen it because it's held up right here.
Where's the credit card kept?
In the safe.
My wallet.
I had a question on the bank statement, they were showing, they were showing ATM withdrawals, but they weren't even numbers.
That was brought to our attention.
I didn't know we had one until just recently.
Notified the bank and anyone that gets paid a.
Physical check.
Check from Tession and the actions. They, they classified as ATM withdrawal, and it was also classified as safety deposit box.
Yes, we caught that.
There too.
And, cause we were going, what is this?
She said their bank has a hard time reading these checks that Tession, uh, sends through for payroll checks. She did get them fixed and provided an updated statement with the corrected.
I figured it was something, cause with them not being even amounts at all, it couldn't have been an actual.
Yeah, and he mentioned his, uh, yeah, just about had a corner.
Where'd that come from?
Mike, that's, that's very, a very good, uh, thought, uh, I, I didn't notice that they were not even amounts in twenty-dollar increments.
Twenty, ten dollar increments.
I did not think of that, I just jumped up and go, oh my god.
Yeah.
Who's been that? That would've been my first thought.
Do we, they ever do? Well, so that's, like, do we do have that, do we have that, so we can't do that, okay, so that's, that's, that's why I was asking.
I don't believe there is a cash advance option on our credit card, if there is, we've gotta get rid of that.
Well, that's what I was wondering, if we, if we, if that was available, we should cut it off, cause I know you get the option to not have it on your cards, but.
Are we, have we concluded, um, the approval of bills payable? New business?
Oh, Cintas, hold the speaker, how much did you wanna talk about that?
I talked with Shane with Cintas, he, uh, said that they can do a thirty-six month contract, their system itself doesn't allow them to actually put thirty-six into the physical contract, they said that they're more than happy to water out the thirty-six, and they have, it's been provided. At the very end of the Cintas contract, I do have the original, as you recall.
So.
That was a sixteen month contract. We have roughly twenty-eight months left on the rest.
So that'll, the thirty-six will override the twenty-something?
Yes, and we can also make any changes we want, if we wanna add, remove anything without. without any cost. Then you'll also see a Centos report update that has the cost comparisons between what we're paying now at the top, which is what we're got proposed from Centos with their.
Big difference.
Yes.
Look out.
Yep.
I mean, do you think if each one has about five shirts and things, or?
Shane also said that because it's a government contract, the prices don't change very much over the courses of the years as the current plan would.
And I did have Alex ask about the flame retardant.
Yep, they can wash the flame retardant uniforms as long as they don't use bleach. They can use fabric softener as long as they wash it with water right after. So they have to do another wash with just water.
But no, that's not an accident.
So are the people that have those aware of those instructions?
I'm not sure.
Hopefully it would be on the.
We can communicate that.
Yeah.
So I mean, what we're looking for then is a motion to accept this new contract. I mean, with the price savings.
Pretty much an all brainer.
Yeah, a brainer to me. So I'll make that motion, we accept the thirty-six month contract.
We have a motion on the floor to accept the thirty-six month contract as presented by Centos. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in the floor, a motion in the second on the floor to approve the contract for Centos. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Anything else?
Sir?
Thank you.
Okay, new business first, we have a bill number seven. An ordinance demanding section eighty-six point zero eight. Is this, is it point three zero or point five zero? O five zero or O three zero?
Point three zero, yeah.
Say it again?
Point zero three zero.
Zero three zero. Of the code of ordinances of Monroe City Municipal Code. Do I need to read this in its entirety?
No, we're not taking any action tonight on this. This is what we discussed earlier with Brad and we're, we're still kinda hung up on the deposits and so I don't know if that's still.
Brad is okay with it as written.
Okay.
And I, I think, you know, we did a reading, the first reading.
This has not been posted, I took it down after I decided to remove it from the agenda, so.
So I think then, then you, you make your changes and, and put it in the correct color ink. We post it on the wall, we get on the next agenda and we'll do the reading. And we'll, we'll need to do a first and a second because there have been modifications, correct?
Yes.
Okay, very well. The second thing we have on the new business is bill number ten, which I have to find real quick here.
It's right before the end, it's the end of, the last two pages.
Yeah, I'm going to discuss something before we do that. So we're talking about bill number ten, and let me explain what, what happened and why this is necessary. Bill number ten is gonna be an ordinance to repeal section eighty-six point oh seven. Before I go down that road, eighty-six point oh seven was an ordinance that was created, it was oh seven, twenty twenty-three. That ordinance indicated that there was going to be a utility meter policy and that every dwelling in the city of Monroe City would have a separate meter for water, gas, and electric. And if a multiple unit dwelling lacks a separate meter for water, gas, and electric, then said multiple unit dwellings shall be required to pay at least the monthly minimum for water, gas, and electric for each dwelling in the unit. A subsequent review and determination by the attorneys at MPUA determined that that part two B was unlawful. And consequently, after reviewing the entirety of the ordinance, we're proposing to the board to repeal ordinance zero seven, two zero two three, otherwise known as section eighty-six point oh seven. So I'm going to start from the beginning. We have before us bill number ten, an ordinance repealing section eighty-six point oh seven utility meter policy of the Monroe City Municipal Code. Be ordained by the Board of Alderman of the City of Monroe City, Missouri as follows. That section eighty-six point zero seven of the Monroe City Municipal Code is hereby repealed. And I will entertain a motion.
Do we gotta do reading and whatever?
Sir?
Do we gotta do reading to this or just the motion to repeal it?
This is going to be a first reading.
First reading, okay, I'll make a motion for first reading.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor for the first reading, we have a second? We have a motion, a second on the, for the first reading, all in favor? It has to be by voice? Excuse me?
The second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. First reading carries. I'll entertain a motion for the second reading.
I'll make a motion for the second reading of bill number ten.
We have a motion on the floor for the second reading of bill number ten and ordinance repealing section eighty-six point zero seven utility meter policy of Monroe City Municipal Code. Be ordained by the Board of Alderman of the City of Monroe City, Missouri as follows. That's section eighty-six point zero seven of the Monroe City Municipal Code is hereby repealed.
I'll say it.
We have a motion, a second for second reading. This has to be done by voice, correct?
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Snyder?
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Saunders?
Yes.
Yep.
Motion carries. Second reading is approved. Okay, we moved the city property for sale up to the top, it's been concluded. Unfinished business, there being none.
We gotta go up twenty twenty-four tax rates, we have to make a motion to approve those.
Okay.
Well, we did an official reading earlier that this is the, this is what does work.
Yeah.
What do I need to do?
Need a motion?
A motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the, the tax rates as read earlier.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the twenty twenty-four tax rates, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, the second on the floor to approve the twenty twenty-four tax rates. Is this by voice or by ayes and nays? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Twenty twenty-four tax rates are approved. Next, anything else? Okay, there being no unfinished business, we now need to have a motion to go into close, excuse me, closed section meeting pursuant to RSMO six one zero point zero two one, legal actions, causes of action or litigation involving a public governmental body and/or any confidential or privileged communications between a public governmental body and/or its representatives and attorney. I need a motion?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the floor to go into executive session, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second forward, go into executive session pursuant to RSMO six one zero point zero two one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alderman Snyder?
Yes.
Alderman Simpson?
Yes.
Alderman, Alderman Planchet?
Yes.
Don't you do it again?
No.
Yeah. All right, we're going to be in executive session as soon as the room is cleared.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need short break?
No.
Is this long?
Long break.
Is this a long, close session?
No, this is super quick.
Hold on.
Is it off?